Monday, January 11th, 2021. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website, www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Our first item on the agenda is a discussion item, Master Plan Committee update. Mrs. Latrell.
Good evening. The Master Plan Committee will be meeting again this Wednesday, the 13th, as we continue on. Again, all our documents are on our Google Drive, which is on our website that can be reached through the town website. All are welcome.
Can I add something to that, Mimi?
Sure.
Okay, I want to let everyone know that if you're not aware of it, Sarah facilitates those meetings for the Zoom broadcast and recording and such. So she also takes care of those whenever there's a Master Plan Committee meeting. And also, if I'm not mistaken, I think, Mimi, the Master Plan Committee is going to vote on the 2021 schedule for Master Plan Meetings?
I think that we did the last meeting.
You did already, okay.
Yeah.
So there is an updated, there's a schedule for 2021 so that people can look out in advance and see if they want to, you know, listen in or whatever. And that's all I had. I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Mimi, when did you start, when did you start these hearings, these meetings?
I think it'll be a year in March, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought we were approaching a year. And I think the optimistic schedule was to be pretty much wrapped up by this time. But your good work and thorough, you know, details and the participation of your group is all good. It's better to do it right than do it necessarily fast. So now, the 2021 schedule, does that go all the way to December?
It does, and we're hoping we won't need many of those meetings.
That's it.
We hope to start working on the draft after this meeting. So hopefully, things will move quickly from here.
And if so, then there would be a good timing coincidental to, hopefully, a spring or early summer town meeting.
Yeah, that was our intention, to have at least a draft to present a town meeting.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 96 Mount Vickery Road, definitive subdivision plan approval and a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman. I'm going to refuse myself from this item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan approval is scheduled for 7:05. I see that it, my computer says it's 7:07. That public hearing is continued, is being continued from December 14th. There's also a public hearing at 7:10 PM for 96 Mount Vickery Road, lower impact development special permit. As you know, we generally combine these so close together, and the action of the site plan, I mean subdivision approval and the action of the lid are so tied together that we manage them together. So if there's no objections, we'll open both public hearings at this time. And I'll turn it over to the town planner for an update.
All right. Hi, everybody. All right, since the last planning board meeting on December 14th, we received an email from the Board of Health with a report regarding soil testing and soil perk testing, witnessing, and different information regarding that the recorded percolation tests are good indefinitely, deep hole tests were done, generally good for two years. All soil tests confirm that all six lots are capable of having residential structures designed and built without any public health or environmental harm. So as long as engineering plans in conformance with state type Title V code and Southborough Board of Health rules and regs are prepared, submitted, and approved by the Board of Health. And the tests were conducted by Bowler Engineering Certified Soil Engineers, evaluators, I'm sorry, during selective days in November and December. And the Board of Health Sanitary Inspector and Certified Soil Evaluator witnessed all required deep observation and perk test hole on each of the proposed of the six lots. Michael, I think, had probably received that information directly, but I had asked Paul Pazinski, the Board of Health agent, to provide us with feedback on that, I believe. Then also, let's see here, on January 7th, just a few days ago, we received a second submission, a revised submission from Bowler Engineering with plans dated January 5th, 2021, an updated stormwater report with the same date and response to Fussin O'Neil review comments, which we had in hand at the last meeting. That submission was emailed to Fussin O'Neil on Friday and distributed to the planning board on Friday. And then this morning or midday, I submitted, we submitted them to the town departments for their review as well. I believe I indicated the Butters emails at the last meeting. And let's see if I forgot anything else. Nope, I think that's it. So, oh, one last thing. You'll notice Nathan Mahonen is on the panel. He is with Bowler Engineering. Jim Bernardino, who previously managed the project, has moved on. And now Nathan is the new project manager for Bowler. So he's the new face. I've spoken with Nathan in the past, and he coordinated with me late last week. So that's the status.
Welcome, Nathan.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Turn it over to you or to Michael?
Yep. Thank you, Karina, for the update, and good evening to everybody. Again, Nathan Mahonen with Bowler Engineering, along with Mike and Tony Bartolini from Bartolini Properties here this evening. As noted, you know, our office has recently submitted a response to comments and revised information prior to the hearing. We know and understand that, given the timing, there has been no additional review of the new material, but we wanted to come in front of you this evening to provide an update as to where things stand and then discuss any potential, you know, additional comments or questions the board might have this evening relative to the project. So as noted, we submitted revised information, including updated site plans, revised drainage report, and LID management plan, along with a formal response to all of the comments provided by Fussin O'Neil. The comments from Fussin O'Neil were mostly technical in nature, and we feel that they have been addressed in the most recent submission. Obviously, they've been recently forwarded to Fussin O'Neil, so they'll give a look at that and provide their feedback on that submission as well. But overall, the required changes from the review were minimal, and they didn't have a major impact on the project design. One of the additional items that was included in the revised plan set is an open space exhibit that details how the project is providing the 10% open space based upon the gross lot area. We did want to reiterate that, as previously noted, we don't necessarily agree with the interpretation of the requirement, but as a show of good faith with the board and the neighbors, the applicant has agreed to provide 10% open space based upon the gross lot area. And the open space area that's being provided, as well as a calculation showing how that is in compliance with what's being requested, is detailed on that same exhibit. And kind of finally, as a way of an update, the applicant has had discussions with the Butter at 170 Middle Road. This time, it's our understanding that the applicant has agreed with the Butter to provide a cluster of trees to screen the views of their property to the development, and that these will be installed along with the other landscaping that's done on the lot and around the home, once the buyer for the lots are known, and that particular lot where the screening is needed is developed. So in general, that's a brief update as to where we stand. And as I noted, we're happy to answer any questions or talk about anything else related to the project that the board, you know, may want to discuss this evening.
John, may I just interject that I also failed to mention, Freddie Gillespie from the Open Space Preservation Commission also emailed me this afternoon that they did not have a chance to review the plans. But they are going to schedule a meeting and will let you know the date in hopes that they'll provide additional revisions to the plan based on tonight's hearing, if any. In that time, we can review them and offer comments to the planning board. So Open Space will have their review comments anticipated by January 25th meeting. And Nathan should probably coordinate with Freddie Gillespie, and Michael should too, on when that meeting happens. Thanks.
Okay. So if that's it, then I'll open it up to the board. We are a bit limited tonight in our ability to comment because of the recent submittal and the lack of the peer review comments. So, Mr. Stein, any questions, comments?
Now at this time, I'm going to wait for peer review and Open Space Commission review.
Mrs. Latrell.
Good evening. So, Karina, we received the response to the first, the ethanol's.
Yes, an initial review was received. The, let me tell you.
January 5th letter from Bowler? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't receive that.
No, there was no new Fussin O'Neil review letter.
Right, but the response to the original Fussin O'Neil from Bowler?
That's this one.
Yeah, I didn't, so that I didn't see.
January 5th.
Okay.
It's on the Dropbox?
I didn't see it on the Dropbox either.
Also check news and announcements on the planning web page for today's.
Karina, if I can just interject for a second, this has been a recurring thing, where like we get the emails, and there's two different links to two different drop boxes. At this case, so, Mimi, if you go back to the email with the Dropbox link, there's a second link in the line specific to this agenda item, and that Dropbox link has the materials that you're talking about. I don't know why this has been happening, why we have two different drop boxes, but I will say, I've noticed this, and it's a little confusing for the members. Thanks.
All right, Jesse, it is the same Dropbox? It's just a folder in it.
Yeah, so I, so whatever my link was, all I have on it is, all that's under this project is the first Fussin O'Neil letter.
That's right. There is no second Fussin O'Neil letter yet.
Correct, but I mean, that's the only thing.
The response comments, yeah, that's all in the submissions folder. So it would be in the submissions link, but we'll make sure that it gets also into the meetings folder as well. But it's in the submission folder.
All right, so I'll look for that. And then, my questions. Will the trees along Mount Vickery Road be preserved? For either Bartolini Construction or Bowler? Can you answer that question?
Certainly. Actually, Mike and I were talking about this earlier, that the intent is to try to save as many trees as possible along the frontage to help with kind of screening of the first lot, lot number one there from the road.
Okay, so will they, will there be trees noted on the plans that will be preserved?
There aren't any currently. There are a couple along the frontage there that we are looking at preserving, but there aren't currently any shown on the site plan.
Okay. And is the intention to have this subdivision completed within two years?
I would defer to Mike on the timing of the construction.
You mean from start to finish? Is that, or do you mean start within the two years? I don't, like, do you mean completed in total?
Yes, from the date of approval.
The way we operate, most likely not. Like, once we start there, we intend to finish it as fast as possible. But I don't know if we'll be starting. It's difficult to tell when we'll be starting with the projects that we have before us now.
Okay, because the subdivision application says the undersigned will complete the project within two years. I'm asking because I've heard that that isn't, that's what the application says, and I think, Michael, you signed it, but from what I've heard, it doesn't appear that that's the case.
I think Nathan can, maybe we can address that, but I, yeah, I don't, I'm not, we're not planning on starting this immediately after we finish here.
Okay. Are there any large trees on the property? Mature trees?
So the project has historically been used for some logging facility nature in the past, so the amount of mature trees and larger trees on the site is minimal. There are a couple, you know, maybe here or there, mostly of the coniferous or, you know, pine tree type. We are working with the conservation based upon the last meeting that we had last week to take a little bit further look at the site to identify maybe some larger trees that we could identify on the plans to look at saving. We'll actually be looking at those in the field this week with the applicant, see what we can identify for those areas as requested by the commission.
Okay. And so, as well as the conservation, it's also part of the rules and regulations of the subdivision to show mature trees on the plan. And also, how has this subdivision been designed to reduce the volume of cut and fill in the area over which the existing vegetation is disturbed?
Yeah, so there was cut and fill calculations on a map submitted as part of the LID management plan that details the anticipated cut and fill for the site. And generally, we looked at balancing the site as close as possible with most of the imported material that will be required will be select material for construction, you know, roadway-based materials, gravel, you know, material for underneath foundations, trenching for utilities and things of that nature. So the project as detailed in the LID management plan has been balanced to the maximum extent that we could for the given project.
So it has, so it looks like outside of the 20-foot no-touch, it's almost everything else is going to be disturbed.
So the limit of work, let me see if, just switch over the plans here for one second. Just bring that page up.
Nathan, you can share your screen if that would be helpful.
I just want to get it set here on my screen first before sharing it, so.
Sure, sure, of course.
Yeah, that in one second here. So the limit of work has been set along, let's pop up here, the, why that's showing so small today, but the limit of work on the outside of the properties is shown along the 20-foot buffer, in some cases along these lots, but there are some areas outside of it where we do pull away from the 20-foot. And there is an area up in the corner here that will be left undisturbed. As part of the ongoing discussions with the commission, one of the other additional things that they asked us to do was look at trying to increase some of the, or minimize some of the disturbance to the buffer zone, kind of behind these lots, lots 1 through 4. Again, we'll be working with the applicant in the field this week to try to identify those areas to minimize the amount of disturbance on the lots, and in particular, in these areas here. In addition, as Mike's described before in the past, as the road is developed and the lots are developed, the applicant will look for kind of select areas that, you know, don't necessarily need to be disturbed, it can be preserved as they're, you know, developing each individual lot on a lot-by-lot basis to try to minimize the overall disturbance of the project. But that's the general approach, that's what's outlined on the plans and in the documents that were submitted to the board.
Okay.
And it's really, a lot of people are focused on the no-touch zone, but there is obviously a large portion of undisturbed wetlands over here and a portion of upland on the opposite side that would obviously remain as undisturbed and as part of the project.
Right. But they, I mean, that, you can't disturb the wetlands.
There's provisions to disturb it to a certain extent, but it's worth noting that there is a large portion of vegetated wetland that would obviously be considered undisturbed as part of the project.
Okay. So as part of the subdivision rules and regulations, it states that it's a major objective of the board to preserve the natural features, minimize the removal of healthy trees, excessive grading, destruction of natural vegetated surfaces. So I'm having a hard time seeing how this meets that, because it appears that pretty much everything, like all the trees are coming down, and everything outside of the 20-foot no-touch is being disturbed. And I had mentioned at the last meeting that the, that the street trees, the red maples were intolerant to salt. And I noticed that you, instead of having the native, native street trees, you now have a cultivar, which is still a red maple, so I'm not sure if that is more tolerant to salt or not.
So the street trees first here, the carpet red maple that's listed on the plans is listed as an approved street tree under the regulations, and is listed as moderately salt tolerant. There really wasn't a street tree in the regulations that said specifically salt tolerant, or this is the best salt tolerant tree. They kind of rated it to not moderately from the way that we were reading it. So we picked a tree from the regulations that is listed as moderately salt tolerant. If it's a cultivar and the board, which is another species, I mean, I don't know if there's a specific species that the board is looking for or another type of species, but again, we picked it from the listed regulations. So we were presuming it was an acceptable tree underneath the regulations.
From our, from our street tree guidelines?
Correct. There's this street tree guidelines and there's subdivision guidelines for the trees as well. But there's a, I mean, it was numerous pages of different trees that were listed within the regulations that were available for use.
Yeah, you, it only seemed like there is maybe five moderately salt tolerant trees, and that was your highest rating for salt tolerance? And that was one of them. It's in the street tree guideline, so I don't.
Okay. I didn't, I'll go back and look at that.
Because the red, the red maples on it as well, it does say intolerant to salt, but I just, you're going to have to, I don't, because there, I don't think there was much to pick from for moderately salt tolerant trees. I think there's like 30 trees and only five of them qualify.
Nathan, can you confirm that was a 2019 street tree guideline?
Not off the top of my head.
Did you get it off the website?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, that should be the current one. I believe, Mimi, at the time, and I don't want to speak out of turn here, but, and I have to look back at the guideline too, but I remember working with the DPW, and we had a few trees put in there that were salt tolerant, because the goal was to have straight native species for the most part. So there were a limited number of the salt tolerant out of that whole group, if I recollect.
Yeah, I looked at them. I guess I didn't look very well. I'll have to go back. And then, my last question was, the lid techniques that should be integrated into every aspect of the site design, rain gardens, buffer strips, fire retention areas, rain barrels, permeable pavement, vegetated open channels, are any of those being used?
So the stormwater system drains into a surface infiltration basin at the corner of the site. I actually do believe that one of the Fussin O'Neil comments asked about the potential for underground drainage at the buildings for the rooftop. Those were omitted from the plans as the amount of infiltration that's required under stormwater management, and the state and local guidelines is maintained and held within the infiltration basin. And, excuse me, sorry. That's, that's the way that the system has been designed, and it meets the state guidelines for stormwater management. And it'd be DEP standards, again, that's being reviewed by Fussin O'Neil, but we believe we've addressed our comments relative to the questions on the stormwater system.
So there, so there are no low-impact development techniques that are being utilized?
Well, there are no rain gardens or rain cisterns, that thing that are implemented. We have looked at doing low-impact development techniques in other ways, you know, reducing the pavement width from 24 feet to 20 feet, the request for the waiver to reduce the impervious area by removing or the requirement for the construction of the sidewalk, which would essentially only service the homes on the street, as there's no sidewalk to connect to out in the main road. So we've looked at ways to incorporate LID by reducing impervious area rather than necessarily constructing of, you know, a small on-lot fire retention area for the homes or things of that nature.
Okay, so, so the techniques that are called for in the bylaw have not been utilized?
To be honest with you, I'd have to take a look at that section a little bit more detail. To be honest with you, I'd have to take a look at that section a little bit more detail. Just to see what the language says relative to requirements versus what's on the plans. But I can certainly do that as we're progressing and waiting for Fuss and O'Neal to provide their updated letter.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mrs. Holahan.
Hi, good evening, I just had one question, so I was going through your response, comment number 14. You in, you state a separate tree line exhibit was included in the submission and I couldn't locate that.
And apologies about that, I noticed that reading the letter before the meeting again tonight, that, that was a typo. It should basically just say that the, the tree lines are shown on the submitted plans, both the existing and proposed. As well as the limits of trees to be removed.
And then just curious, just saw the two demolition plans, demo A and B, so. Is that, is the intention to do clear cut, like all at once, just clear it all down? Or are you proposing is that you're working with the, the conservation commission to establish a plan for that?
So the, the project would be phased, the roadway and the stormwater infrastructure and utilities would be constructed first. So the area necessary to construct those elements would be cleared and cut first. And then the lots would be opened up on a lot by lot basis as they're constructed for homeowners. So that the amount of clearing would be, at one time would be limited as what's needed for the development of the road and then the development of each lot as you progress through.
Okay, that's all the questions that I had for today, thank you.
There was, going back to Mrs. Luttrell from our last meeting, I believe there was. I can't seem to find it in the bowler, well, I thought I read it a little while ago, about a separate landscape plan. I think the response was that you planned to. Work with the new homeowners on landscaping, is that, do I have that right?
So the, the comment I believe you're referring to from the letter and the response letter is. Fuss and O'Neal was kind of asking more of a generic question on how. The areas that were being opened up were intended to be stabilized for permanent stabilization. And, and our general response was that, you know, the outside of the street trees, obviously. And the work within the right of way, which would be, you know, loam and seed on the shoulders. The lots would be loaned and seeded for restoration and permanent stabilization. And then on a lot by lot basis, the landscaping would be. Developed and installed in conjunction with consultation with the future owner, because obviously everybody has different tastes for what they want to see. But the intent would be to provide, you know, plantings around the home and on the lot, to provide some additional landscaping for each home as they're built.
Is what you're just saying, Nathan, a numbered comment?
Yep, let me pull up that letter. This would be. A particular comment, I thought that was in there. General comments. My apologies, there was, there was two separate Fuss and O'Neal letters, one for planning board and one for conservation. I think that specific comment came up in the conservation letter. So it's, it's not in writing in one of the response to comments, but the procedure and discussion that I just had is the applicant's intent on. Landscaping the, the individual lots and permanent stabilization.
Well, okay. The, uh, planning board, I think the board would consider that to be kind of an open ended item. Whereas if a future homeowner says, I don't want any landscaping. Then we get no landscaping, or if the future homeowner wants some exotic plants. That are either invasive or unpleasant to insects and birds or the neighbors. And we wind up in the future having. People that are concerned about that come before the board and say, how could you approve this? So, I would recommend to the board. And we have the town planner make sure we coordinate properly with conservation because we don't want to cross over into their jurisdiction. That we have a, an agreed upon. Understanding as to how the landscaping is going to be documented. And I think earlier, Nathan, you referred to the street trees on Mount Vicary as part of the overall landscaping. Program, and if those are town trees. It's not necessarily up to you as to whether they stand or come down. And we would be very concerned and make sure that any public trees that are proposed to be altered. But destroyed, that you let us know about that way ahead of time. And make sure that you get the proper approvals if it actually gets to that point.
Understood on the, the street trees, obviously anything within the right of way would be considered. You know, town owned tree and we require generally removal of that tree or alteration to that tree require approval from the, from the town.
Comment 16 talks about the calculations relative to a 50 year storm and what you prepared, which was for a 25 year storm event. And the response says updated rational pipe size sizing calculations have been provided to consider the 50 year storm. What is, what do you mean by consider? Did you revise the calculations?
The calculations were revised, yes.
Based on a 50 year storm?
Correct.
Okay. I think the only other thing that I have is, and I'll say this, I think maybe the same words that I've said to. Previous proponents that come in. Over the years and don't take the lid seriously. I think. That you could have a showstopper if you don't take the lid requirement seriously, Mrs. Luttrell has gone through. That, and it seems to me that for six houses. On a wide open spot, wide open piece of land. And the experience and reputation of the, the developer. Is well within your capability to incorporate those lid recommendations. Not just eliminating sidewalks, which saves you money. Or reducing the pavement, which saves you money, we understand that does reduce the impervious area. But there's a benefit to you to doing that along with the environment. So I will say to you what I've said to previous. Applications who don't take it seriously, you should take it seriously. Look at those lid requirements, those lid recommendations and make it work. I'll open it up to the public, any questions or comments from the public?
I do not see, oh, yes, I do have a few hands raised.
If I may, just quickly before.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, um, your comments duly noted regarding the, the L I D requirements. As well as from, from Miss Luttrell, we will take a look at those along with the discussion on the landscaping. And we'll discuss it with the applicant in more detail. As we're going through the, the next couple of weeks up to the next meeting and while Fuss and O'Neal is going through. Their additional review of the material that was recently submitted.
Right, and we'll also be keeping in touch with conservation so that we make sure that it's a, you know, it's a group effort.
Certainly.
Thank you, thank you, go ahead, Sarah.
Sure, Alex, if you could just state your first and last name and your street address, please?
So this is Terry Rickett, actually.
On your name.
Terry at 97 Mount Vicary Road, so I just really have two questions or point of clarifications. I've heard in both the conservation meeting and in this meeting. The reference that there are minimal trees on the lot because it was a lumberyard before and. I'm probably just mishearing what you're actually saying, but there are a lot of trees on that lot, at least 50 to 75. So I'm just trying to understand or I just wanted to be clear, I understand they're going to take them all and there's nothing I can do about it and that's fine. But to keep saying there are minimal amount of trees on the lot, I mean, I don't consider 50 to 75 trees minimal, so I, I'm sure I'm missing something is all. Oh, I guess I'll say my second question, so I would, you know, and then, I'm just, my second question, I know when Ms. Luttrell had asked about the trees on Mount Vicary. That were talked about but not officially in the plan. So I guess I just wanted to ask, is the intent that they will, will make sure that they get put into the plan so that that's done? So those are my two questions and thank you very much.
Did you want to respond to that, Nathan, relative to the number of trees on the lot?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, the discussion with the commission and so forth has been really around mature trees. Relative to what's left, there has been a, a good amount of tree removal on the lot in its past history over many and many years and decades, it's my understanding. But the, the reference and discussion with the commission is about the number and location of mature trees. And they had specifically kind of defined that and given us some guidance moving forward and that's what we intend to work on and follow up on.
What's the guidance they gave you?
Looking for 15 inch diameter and larger and specifically deciduous type trees.
So the, the large mature pines are off the table regardless of their diameter?
They were looking at what they quote unquote discussion was legacy trees, the larger trees with a larger canopy. That are of deciduous in nature, provides some shading and some screening for the property, that was specifically what was discussed and talked about.
Thank you, that, that reinforces our need to make sure that we coordinate with the planning board and planning department. Coordinate properly with conservation so we're all on the same page. And then I believe my previous comment about the street trees. Those definitely need to be on the plan and nobody's going to touch the street trees until everybody, including D P W. Has agreed, go ahead, next.
Jason, you should be all set if you want to just state your first and last name and your street address, please.
Hi, my name's Jason Kurtz, I'm at 168 Middle Road in Director Butter. My comments, some of it is some additional information based on some items that Mimi touched on. The numbers that are given by Bowler in the submission that was made for the 1214. Presentation on the PDF number seven, it's, they give all the numbers in terms of what the. Coverage is before and then the coverage after of the land, you know, they listed. 5.18 acres as forested before and after point nine. So I would say that's definitely clearing out most everything. The stuff that they're putting back, they list as meadow, which is, and brush land, which is obviously just lawn. The amount of open space, you know, they basically are just trying to utilize the required 20 foot setback as their. 10% open space, looking at their cut and fill drawing that they provided, which is. Another PDF number nine, I believe. They basically are doing a massive fill or cut for the drainage part, but mostly fill on everything that's outside of that 20 foot no touch zone. So it's just kind of, it's interesting to hear them talk about how they want to try and preserve this or that. Because they, to me, looking at the drawings that they submitted, it looks like they're just kind of going through clearing everything out. Regardless of, you know, if it's, has any value or not to themselves. And then the last point that I wanted to touch on is the, the lid requirements. Because I know for a fact from virtually almost any rain that is more than a half inch. Our property takes on water in the back portion of our land because we abut some of that wetlands as well. And the back 15, 20 foot of our property is very close to the same level as the wetlands. And when we take on, you know, rains, we start to see ponding and stuff like that. So, you know, they have utilized documents that say that they're anticipating adding to the water system 4,000 or some gallons. A day from all these different units when it's fully functioning, and so water control is a massive. A massive worry on our behalf because I can just foresee the, the water levels going up, which means our yards are getting flooded. More regularly, and so, you know, having them reevaluate some of their water maintenance or water control. I think would be very, very important for the abutters. Because, you know, just having one massive system that sends everything very quickly down to one end. I, I just don't see it as, you know, beneficial or helping, so that, those were my points, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
If, if I may, while, while Sarah's looking, just two points of clarification relative to what Mr. Kurtz was discussing. Again, I, as, as Karina note, I wasn't here for that, you know, 1214 submission and the, were involved in the project for the 1214. Was presented at the last meeting, but the 0.9 acres of remaining forested land. Not sure exactly where that number is being pulled from, but it's not 100% accurate. The last numbers that we presented to the commission, the area of maintained buffer zone alone was 0.8 acres. And that does not include the, the wetland system, the isolated upland system at the rear of the site plus. Some of the other areas as we discussed along the property lines as we noted before. And then second regarding the, the ponding in the yard, I'm not familiar with his, you know, house in particular and some problems he may have had in the past. But as noted, the, the site has been designed in accordance with stormwater management, which has criteria in that that were required to meet that. Minigates and minimizes, you know, downstream flooding impacts. The documents we have submitted outlines our compliance with those standards and Fuss and O'Neal is in the process of review, reviewing those. Again, they've asked us to make some minor changes to those calculations, we have done so in accordance with all of their requests and. Await kind of their final review of that additional information that we provided.
Mrs. Luttrell.
Uh, Nathan, what Jason was referring to is on your development impact statement. And that's where it states that at present there's 5.1 acres forested and after completion 0.9. So if that's incorrect, you may want to update that development impact statement.
Thank you, I'll take a look at that original one if it does need to be revised and resubmitted, we'll provide a new one.
Thank you.
Sarah?
I think that's everybody.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, hi, so I just had, this is Terry again, I just had a quick follow up because I'm, I just don't understand just my own ignorance. What, why, why is there a preference for deciduous trees as opposed to conifers? Like, why do we look to keep those and not the conifers? And again, I really, in this point, I'm just curious. Does anyone know?
Well, that's a, according to Nathan, that's, that's a conservation commission request, is that right, Nathan?
That was the discussion is when we were talking about the larger legacy trees was to, to look at those trees in particular. I know that, I'm not a, not a landscaper. I know that I'm not a landscaper architect or an arborist, but my understanding is that, you know, a lot of times those larger mature pine trees, when they're by themselves, they can tend to become unhealthy. And you can have some issues with some fall hazards with them. So it's really kind of a safety concern, is my understanding, relative to maintaining some of those more individual conifers-type trees.
Okay, so also, just a quick question, Nathan, was there also, wasn't there some discussion too, if I'm not mistaken, about the pine trees, once the areas are cleared, like the pine trees are more exposed to light, and that's?
Yeah, that's where it goes to. I think they're more exposed, usually in the pines, especially even new plantings or maintaining trees, you like to try to keep a group or a stand, is my understanding, so that they have a better chance of surviving and staying healthy. And when you individualize them, it becomes an issue. And it's a safety concern, obviously, once, you know, trees become unhealthy and you have potential for fall hazards of that nature.
Thanks. I see any additional hands raised?
Nathan, can you put sheet C301 on?
Yep, just one moment. So 301, correct?
Yes. Okay, you see, it shows Parkerville Road on the left, and it shows Hubley, Hubley Lane at the bottom. And it shows Hidden Meadow Lane.
Yep.
And then, it show way down on the bottom, it shows the Mass Pike, Route 90. So I've been on the board for a while, and I remember back when we were doing Boswell and Hidden Meadow and Hubley, all of those developments. There was concern about the flooding in that, in that area. And I remember there was concern about, oh, there was a discussion about a culvert or a pipe that drained that area, because all the flow goes south toward the Pike. Is that correct?
My understanding is it heads in that direction, correct?
And there was concern that the pipe, the flow to that pipe or that culvert created, it couldn't handle the flow in high-storm events, causing, basically acting as somewhat of a dam, and causing the water in this whole neighborhood to back up. And I'm hearing from the neighbors on Middle who abut that wetland, the same words that I heard years ago from the other neighbors who were in that area, that that there was a concern about that. Do you, do you know the capacity? You maybe should familiarize yourself with how the water leaves this part of the neighborhood and gets itself on the other side of the Pike. Which then, I know when we were having these developments being looked at, the engineers followed that stormwater flow all the way down to the other side of the railroad tracks to the river. To make sure that they had an understanding of where the water flowed and what the capacity was to receive the flows from this neighborhood north of the Pike. I think it's our response, unless the DPW or somebody can provide assurance or an update on the status of those flow structures and the, and the flow channels. I think it's the responsible thing to do is to take a look at the water leaving this area and making sure that it there's capacity for it to be received downstream. Is there anyone else, any questions or comments?
Don, if you'd like, I can also forward you the updated copy of the drainage report. It may, I don't think it includes what you're talking about, but I know that we didn't include that in your packet, the revised one.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little, you know, peculiar to, you know, ask a proponent for a small, relatively short road with only six houses to take a look, you know, a half a mile downstream. But this was, this has been a problem in that neighborhood for a long time, on and off, when we have heavy storms or wet, wet periods of time. And we want to make sure that we don't make it worse, and if there's an opportunity to improve it, we should know that. So right now, if there's nothing else, then we should continue these hearings. Right now, the definitive subdivision review period ends on March 20th. And the lower-impact development special permit review period ends on February 26th. So do you feel, gentlemen, that continuing the hearing to January 25th, which is our next meeting, do you feel that that would be productive?
At this time, yes.
Karina, have you shared, I know you talked to me this afternoon about Fussin O'Neil's timing to respond relative to that January 25th date? I know that's two weeks from now, but if you think, if you think there's enough time for all the necessary steps, then we'll continue it to the 25th, if that motion carries.
I would like to say that realistically, Fussin O'Neil's review comments will come in closer to the 25th than closer to now. So you may not have complete time, enough time to respond with revisions on January 25th. But I did, I mean, they did say that they would have it by the 25th, and I asked them to clarify if they could provide it prior to the 25th with at least some time for you to be able to review them and, you know, possibly address them. But that was later this afternoon, and I haven't heard back. I'll know more tomorrow.
I'm bringing this up because sometimes it's more productive to give it a little bit more time, and since Mr. Bartolini indicated that after, hopefully, this project gets approved, that you'd be, it'd be, you wouldn't jump on it right away. So it doesn't seem like you're on fire necessarily to get this approval, although I know time is money. When's our next meeting after the 25th?
Next meeting is February 8th. Note that also, the 18th is a holiday, Martin Luther King Day. So there is one day less before the 25th, and then the following meeting is February 8th.
So I understand the discussion and Fussin O'Neil's timing with, you know, due respect to the board, the applicant would request that we continue to the 25th, and hopefully, we can get some information out of Fussin O'Neil in advance of that. And we would do obviously our best to turn around any information that we need to do on our end with appropriate time for the board to take a look at it.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael.
I just, if we could keep it to the 25th, I think we should know fairly quickly as to whether or not we can actually keep the the meeting on the 25th. So if we could continue to the 25th, that would be best for us.
Right. We try to, we try to make sure we take care of the applicants, but it's not always just what's best for you. Sometimes it's what's best for everybody. Karina, would we have other business on the 25th?
We would have.
What's happened in the past sometimes is it's the only item on the agenda. And then the proponent says, well, we're just like, we're not ready. We'd like you to continue it to the next meeting. So then, we have to all get together and open the public hearing without comment, continue it, and you know, use up another part of an evening for the board members and staff and the public. So I'm okay with the 25th. Give it a try, but remember, you've also been-
Questioned on that, the other item on, other than the standard items, is Fay School and their potential project.
Okay. All right. So then I guess it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to continue both hearings to January 25th?
Still moved?
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Stein, seconded by Mrs. Luttrell to continue the public hearings to January 25th at 7:05 and 7:10 PM. Any more discussion, any discussion? Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah, just a point. So if the Fussin, I think my greatest challenge is my inability to actually do anything during the course of a day. So if the content comes in on Monday, I'm not able to look at anything in preparation for the night.
Well, then it just, then we just move it on to the, into February and March and April, if we have to. We're going to do it right, rather than jam it all in. Proponent thinks he, thinks he can, it'll be productive, so we'll respect that. Go ahead, Karina.
Yeah, and just want to point out that, you know, the application always explicitly states that any new information, including revised plans, new exhibits, et cetera, required to be in the planning department seven days before the scheduled planning board meeting to legit, you know, to, to guarantee that they get heard, so to speak. If it doesn't come in the, within, you know, with that buffer, seven days buffer, the planning board can opine and decide that they don't want to, they can just simply continue it to the next meeting. But it is true, the turnaround time is, everyone thinks it's, it should be so aggressive, and it doesn't, realistically, it doesn't work that way. Because when we get a submittal, we have to process it in the planning department. Then we, to ensure that everything matches, the electronic files match, the hard copies, et cetera, there's enough copies. It has to get distributed not only to Fussin O'Neil, but to the other departments and the planning board. And then, once it gets to Fussin O'Neil, this is not their only project. So it gets into their queue based on their bandwidth. And typically, it's no less than a week. It's typically a week and a half before we get a response with comments. And as you know, these planning board meetings are every two weeks for the most part. So two weeks is not a realistic timeframe to expect Fussin O'Neil comments, a revised submission from the applicant, and seven days for the planning board to be able to review the new information. Because this is, you know, an elected board and with full-time jobs and et cetera. So, you know, the timeframe has to be that buffer so that they do have a chance to review it. So you can see, that's why I believe Don's asking, because the timeframe is very tight for two weeks to have a complete cycle like that.
Right. I mean, we'd like it done correctly as well. I'm not, I wasn't trying to push you. So if it's, if it's that much easier to go to the eighth or better for everyone, that's, that's, we're okay with that. It's not, I wasn't just trying to keep things moving, wasn't trying to push it to the point of the eighth is fine.
Right, and I just explaining the process, because often it gets perceived that things aren't getting done fast enough, whether it's the reviewing consultant or planning, but we really are trying to do a realistic cycle here. And, you know, this happens every time we get an application, the two-week timeframe, just because there's a meeting every two weeks, doesn't mean that that application is ready to be heard every two weeks.
So I'd like to amend the motion, Mr. Chairman, to February 8th.
Second.
So any discussion? I just, I want to make, you know, the, I think we're all willing, a motion was made to meet on the 25th, and it could be productive. But if, after hearing all of this, if we think it's a better use of time and then if February 8th is okay with you, then, then that's what the motion is. One last time, your choice.
Hi, I think we'll stick to the eighth, that's fine.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes?
Luttrell, yes.
Okay, I think we had made some progress tonight, and we'll see you on February 8th. Look forward to you working with Karina and Fussin O'Neil and getting these these homework assignments cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina, for the timeframe. Thank you. It's more realistic.
Yeah, I just want to be able to provide quality input, too, and I don't want to, so thank you, appreciate it.
No, we do, too. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, Mr. Mills is back, Andrew's back. Next item on the agenda is an approval not required, 176, 178, 182 Courterville Road, MAP 20 parcel 26, that's the town planner. And Sarah, to put this up on the screen and give us the background. And Mr. Hagopian is with us from Cornerstone. Good evening.
Sorry, got to reach under my dining room table. File. Okay, we received an A and R application on January 4th, was filed with the town clerk for the property indicated. It is MAP, let me just see here. Here it is, MAP 20 parcel 26.
Can we get that on the screen?
Virujan, are you prepared to share that, or do you need us to?
There we go.
There it is.
I pulled it up, it's all set.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Karina.
Okay, so the, if you scroll down just a little bit, you see the locus. This property is just south of Mount Vickery, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, just south of Mount Vickery on the east, on the west side. So Virujan, I'll let you describe what's happening here, and then I'll follow up explaining how I reviewed it.
Sure. So there are three existing houses on the frontage on Courterville Road, 176, 178, and 182. And then there's a large piece of backland. And as simply as I can put it, the Baldellis want to split up that rear parcel into equal portions and give each lot an equal share of the rear land. So all the lots in the front remain the same, other than they all gain area and two of them gain frontage. And we're also rectifying the issue of an encroaching garage, giving it the adequate side yard setback. So we're fixing that as well. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. You looked this over, Karina. Good to go.
I did. And Virujan supplied me with the initial draft. I reviewed it, checked the deed references, all the notes, et cetera. He provided the, some minor revisions, and it looked good to go.
Open it up to the board, Mr. Mills.
I have no question.
Mr. Stein?
Just, Karina, can you reconfirm that the frontage meets the A and R requirement?
No, they are non-conforming lots, I believe, from the late 1800s. If I'm not mistaken, I have the property card here. So they're becoming less non-conforming as far as frontage. So as Virujan pointed out, Lot 1 will maintain the frontage it has as the current parcel. Lot 2 will be gaining 20 feet from Virujan, if you can point to the beginning of the the opening of the property. So Lot 2 is gaining that 20 feet- the opening of the property. So lot two is gaining that 20 feet. And then lot three is getting the other side 20 feet, which is improving their frontage. The minimum frontage requirement, you got to scroll down a little bit for this residential A is
It's 150 feet.
And if you look over in the notes on the right-hand column of the title block in the top right corner, there is a note that says, uh, number seven, eight, lot, lot, uh, note number nine says, lot one proposed frontage remains unchanged. Lot two proposed frontage is 128, I think. I can't really read it. Lot three is 145. So more than they were. So they're becoming less non-conforming.
Correct.
So, Dawn, is that, I, I don't remember doing an A and R with, with, uh, less than the stated minimum frontage before. These are pre-existing lots and the, the, um, the, the planning board would, uh, yes, we, we can definitely do this because it makes, it doesn't make any of the, the three lots less conforming. It makes two out of the three more conforming. Now, if this, if part of this plan or if, if any part of this plan made any lot, any lots frontage smaller, then we wouldn't be able to do that. We would have to, uh, defer that, I think, to the ZBA for a variance. But that's not the case here. It's either the same or better. So we're all. No questions, Stan. Thank you. Mrs. Luttrell.
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Houlihan.
No questions. Thank you.
Um, I noticed, uh, the note here on parcel A, B and C, um, where it says, not a building lot. So these are just to be added to the, um, individual addresses.
Correct.
For just more land. Uh, Mr. Mills.
I make a motion. We approve, uh, the requested, uh, A and R from the applicant for, uh,
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Karina. Karina, what's the plan for us to, uh, sign the A and R?
So we have the Mylar at the planning office. Tomorrow, uh, Sarah and I will coordinate, one of us will coordinate with you to, when anyone can come by or if you need it dropped off and we'll pass it around to the next person. Should take a few days. Richard Baldelli contacted me today and was asking to pick it up tonight, like right after the meeting. He just didn't realize the Zoom part of it. So, um, I told him that it would be during this week. We'd try and get it endorsed so that we will let you know when it's fully endorsed and so you can come pick up the Mylar.
So as soon as, as soon as some point tomorrow, board members could, could make arrangements to sign it.
Correct.
Okay.
In a nutshell, yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda is, uh, just, is a discussion item. Bigelow Road, map 49, lot 19, Eagle Scout project, trail and viewing platform. Ask the town planner to give us the background on this discussion item. And as you can see on the agenda, it's a discussion item. There's no action required by the board tonight. But perhaps the proponent can benefit from our comments and move in an appropriate direction. Karina.
Uh, so we became aware of this project through conservation. There is a property on Bigelow Road. Um, it's known as Assessor's Map 49 Lot 19, and it is in between 42 and 44 Bigelow Road, I believe. And, um, Salf owns a piece of property with, um, kind of not a hammerhead lot, but looked like the A and R lot that we just looked at, where you have a small, width of frontage and then it extends back and it goes to the wildlife refuge on Bigelow Road. So there is a proposal from, um, Robert Stewart, who's a scout looking to have an Eagle Scout project, to create a trail from Bigelow Road down towards the swamp area with a small wooden platform for viewing.
Can we get that on the screen?
Yeah. Maybe the, the, the recent document from today, Sarah.
Yeah.
So today, um, we received and, you know, another copy of the information from Robert and I think they're here. So that was his proposal. It's about a 300-foot long, um, gravel trail. Uh, right now, it's very overgrown with invasives, et cetera. So I believe, and, and he'll, I'll let him speak to this more. I'll just give you a general how it came to us. Uh, so conservation has, um, they're before conservation for notice of intent. And I believe, uh, members of Salf are assisting, uh, Robert Stewart, the scout. At, during which time we received back in September, an email from, um, the resident at 42 Bigelow, uh, which are the Sergies and also the Cramps, um, indicating that they had some concerns regarding, um, the survey of the property. Their concerns with potential future trespass, parking safety, increased traffic, possibly declined property values. Concerns with impacts to the wildlife, like beavers there and, um, things of that nature. Years ago, I want to say like 30 years ago, this property was, um, get, uh, uh, conveyed to Salf. And I reviewed the deed and, you know, there weren't any restrictions on what could be done on that property built into the conveyance of that deed. So the family, um, is, has these concerns. They're worried that the trail may encroach on their property if the lines aren't surveyed properly. They're concerned with possible herbicide, uh, of spraying on invasives if they have their private wells there. So I received that letter, uh, an email with a letter dated August 19th, describing their concerns about during the notice of intent. And then I also received one on September 22nd, uh, with their concerns, again outlining, um, this in a very comprehensive way. Then um, in, um, October 29th of 2020, I received a copy of a letter to the Board of Selectmen from the Sergies, again, 42 Big, Bigelow Road and the Cramps at 44 Bigelow Road, expressing their concerns and copying all the departments. Um, this was followed by a cover letter and a petition from the neighborhood requesting, uh, in November 13th, requesting that, you know, all the boards and committees review this project in, um, as they would any project. In other words, follow the code and if it's required that they should. So here we are. So at the last meeting, I asked if we could enter, you know, have a discussion with the, um, scout so he could explain his project, how he got here. The, and I also informed the neighbors who had concerns uh, so that they would have an opportunity to ask their questions. I can tell you that I had a conversation on the telephone with the scout, Robert Stewart, very productive, explaining to him of concerns about, um, the parking at the entrance and, you know, where that is. Um, that he should contact the building department as far as the deck is concerned, uh, to make sure that anything he has to do through that, um, department. I also had a, um, a good conversation with, um, Donna Sergie, who had asked me if I had all the information of their concerns and I told her we did. And they may be participants here. But, yeah, I don't want to go on too long. So we'll let the, the boy scout talk to his project and his, um, how he feels it would be a benefit to the area and to the town.
I'm just going to stop sharing momentarily so I can promote him to panelist because I can't see my attendees while I'm sharing. So.
And Sarah, you can see there are several, um, abutters in the attendance.
Yes, I can. Yep. So when we get to that point, we'll call that on them as well.
And while we're waiting, I'd like to point out that, you know, it's a residence A district. Salf is the owner.
Robert, are you all set?
Robert Stewart? Robert Stewart, not, I, I don't know if that's him. Robert, can you raise your hand?
I don't.
Here, someone just raised their hand.
Oh, okay. It's under a different name.
Hello, sorry. I'm on, uh, my dad's computer.
That's okay. Sorry, I couldn't find you.
Hello, uh, you call yourself, they call you Robbie?
Uh, Robbie, Robert. I don't mind.
I was just looking at some of the emails, email traffic and you were referred to as Robbie. So welcome to the, uh, planning board. Um, and you're free to, uh, give your presentation, ask your questions and, um, and we'll see where it takes us. But remember, this is a discussion item and you're here to, um, show the public and, and planning board what you're proposing. And, um, if you'd like, we will, uh, provide you with our opinions. You're on.
All right. As it stands right now, um, I'm making a gravel trail, uh, as Ms. Quinn already introduced. Um, it's a, it's on a 40-foot wide strip of property owned by Salf. Up at the top, you can kind of see on the map there, it flares out, uh, as it meets the road to 88 feet. Up in that area is completely overgrown, um, with Japanese knotweed. Um, as part of my project, given the fact that I do plan to build on a, uh, resource or build down to a resource area and within the buffer zone of that resource area. Um, I've already discussed with the Conservation Commission, invasives mitigation, uh, to make up for any damages done to the wetland. So part of that is going to be removing the invasive knotweed. Up in that section also is where, uh, we plan to install parking spaces because the knotweed will already be removed. Right now, we plan on installing two parking spaces, um, just for, to stay away from the two abutting properties, um, although that number can be changed.
Robbie, are you sharing the screen or is Sarah?
I am.
Sarah, can you scroll down to, I think he has some pictures there that show, um, where the proposed, where he's proposing some spaces. Yeah, keep going. It'll be, um, pictures of the side of the roadway as if you were looking at street view. So that's the platform, but keep going. There's, um, I just want it to be clear so you can see where the parking is. Robbie, it's in this report?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, here. That's where it starts. Just scroll up a little bit more, Sarah. There you go.
And also on that map, you can, uh, see the rough dimensions of the parking area. Uh, right next to my dad near the rock there is where the trail will start and it will travel down the, um, length of about 360 feet. I know that has changed from the original 300, but that's been talked about with the Conservation Commission. And it'll be 360 feet down to an eight-foot by eight-foot wooden platform uh, next to the wetlands. I believe, I went by a diagram of the platform as well.
No, back a little, Sarah. Where the wood.
Platform is back.
Uh, above this photo, there's a diagram of the plan for the platform.
Is it this?
Yes. And as far as the trail itself goes, the trail is going to be about three feet wide, um, with gravel going most of the way down. More gravel in areas that are heavily vegetated to help suppress vegetation and less gravel in other areas. So it has less impact on the environment and, um, but it also accurately marks out the trail so that people don't go wandering off into the woodlands there and possibly trespass onto abutters properties. Uh, this map here shows where the trail will be. Uh, the abutters and the Conservation Commission have both raised concerns about the legitimacy of this map and others and, um, the surveying that we at Salf have done. So we have agreed with the Conservation Commission that we are going to get a, um, official survey done of the area. However, we wanted to come to you guys just to see what your suggestions, um, and comments would be on this project and see if there's anything that you might require from us, um, on that survey that the Conservation Commission may not have already thought of.
Robbie, did you say three foot wide or five foot wide?
Three feet. We're thinking about a yard. So a little bit over three feet, but.
Okay. It's my understanding too that the, um, in the Residence A and under the Conservation District, which is included in Residence A zoning district, that it's my understanding that the use is allowed. And there is potential, uh, for the, um, the parking, but it's the parking that would trigger site plan approval based on 174-10. And that any development, non-residential development that increases on-site parking triggers that threshold. Just so you know.
What I understand, it would qualify for a minor site plan review?
Oh, you're going to get a security search.
Correct. And right now, we don't have a, um, we don't, and that goes to the planning board. So we're in the process of updating our site plan review bylaw to accurately reflect that it goes to planning board as opposed to a committee made of the department heads. So it would come before the planning board. But as a minor review, it would not necessarily require a butter notification. As it's a more simplified, um, process, but it would require an engineered site plan, whether it's stamped by a surveyor, a licensed surveyor or a civil engineer, professional engineer. And, um, you would, you understand those reasons. We talked about that on the phone. But if you have questions, you know, feel free to ask. Okay, Dawn. Can hear you, Dawn.
Was that all? Did you, did you want to, uh, open it up to questions or did you have more to tell us?
Uh, well, I did have one question for you guys about, um, parking requirements for a project of this size. Because a lot of the requirements that I saw for parking had to do with floor space. And obviously it's an outdoor trail and floor space. I mean, it depends on your definition of floor space. So while talking on the phone, we figured out that it would probably need like three and a half spaces or something like that, I believe.
Yeah, except I had based that on five foot wide. I thought the trail was five foot wide. So, um, that's why I came up with three and a half. And, and that, the, the use is determined by the building commissioner, who's the code enforcement officer. That's why I suggest you talk to her because she will. That's why I suggest you talk to her, because she will tell you which category you fall under to do your calculation.
Okay.
And it was my interpretation. Yeah, go ahead.
I've reached out to her. I haven't heard anything back yet, though.
Okay, yeah, she, she will get back to you, but she, it was my interpretation when we talked on the phone that the three spaces was derived from the parking code that indicated it was an other use. It was, it didn't fit any of the other categories, so it would be three and a half spaces per thousand square feet. So you'd calculate your deck and your trail with, and your parking area, and come up with the number of spaces. But she, the building commissioner, would confirm that that's the right interpretation of which calculation you used. So you're right, it did come to, you know, three and a half, four spaces, three, three, three to four spaces, depending on how you look at it.
So I'll, if this, we'll, we'll keep this going. I'll just open it up to the Planning Board, and maybe we'll go in reverse. Mrs. Houlihan?
Well, all right. Thank you, Chairman Morris. So thanks, Robert. Appreciate your time. I did have a couple of questions. So I guess the first was, in reading the extensive communications from abutters, it, it, it's not like you're getting open-arm receptivity to the neighborhood in Bigelow. So I'm just curious as to why you're still passionate about pursuing this particular location, and if there are other places that Solf could work with you to, to help support.
Well, this has been a property that Solf has had for a while, and they've wanted to put something here because it is a very valuable property to them. This wetland area is very beautiful wetland. And it also has a lot of opportunity for research of all sorts of wetland critters, birding. And it's also been a changing ecosystem. The beavers have dammed up the area, and it's been getting wetter and wetter over the years, and it's becoming like a marsh. And it's completely locked in by houses at this point, so it's not something that's available to the public. Most people don't even really know it's back there. And the reason I'm so passionate about this is because, you know, I've put in quite a bit of effort so far, and I want to see this project through because I think it'll benefit the community. It's also near the Sawwink Farm and a couple of other open areas in that area. So it'll definitely see use from hikers and such.
So thanks for answering that. I, I'm just curious if there's any kind of collaboration where you've tried to reach out to the neighbors and have conversations around the, around this. I mean, it sounds, I just want to kind of reinforce what Karina spoke to. I'm glad you're getting the property surveyed. I don't have any specific requirements, but I think that's a very clear statement from abutters that they're concerned that you're ensuring that you're staying within the property guidance of what Solf had. I was also curious around their concern around the removal of the invasive species. So you said there was like six large clusters of bittersweet, bittersweet, and nine hundred and sixty-seven square feet of knotweed, Japanese, Japanese knotwood. And so I, I know you're working with conservation, but I think the very, very clear worry from my side is the well water and use of herbicide. And so just didn't understand, or I haven't seen your plan for being able to not only remove, but maintain that, particularly as you, you know, move out of town, and, and this remains, like, who will maintain this? How will you get rid of these species beyond just pulling them up and not using herbicide and the maintenance of the project?
So I forgot to send it over, but we have made an invasive mitigation plan for the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission raised the same concerns about herbicide because originally we put in herbicide by accident. Since then, the herbicide has been removed. There are no plans for herbicide. It's going to be all mechanical removal. As far as the initial removal, usually on scout projects like this, we have quite a few volunteers. And we should be able to clear it. And as far as maintenance goes, my troop, which has been around for over a hundred years, they have agreed to come back and do maintenance on the area. So if Solf, because Solf's obviously going to be checking up on the property, if Solf notices that it's getting overgrown or it needs maintenance, they can contact our troop, and our troop will come back and do maintenance on it.
Great. So thank you. I'm glad you're, you've listened to those concerns as well. And then the only other comment that I had was around the, my interpretation of the bylaw would also agree that if you do plan to put parking spaces, I think the concern around emergency vehicles, being able to turn around, and I think the neighbor concerned they are around having cars parked, I would refer to that 174-10A1, that any non-residential development that results in an increase of onsite parking would trigger a site plan review. So I do think that's a necessary thing.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of why I came to you guys too, because obviously I'm seventeen. I don't really know about a lot of this stuff, so I just want to check in and make sure that we're doing everything right.
A wonderful lesson and great learning for you. So that's all I had. Chairman Morris, thank you. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Did you hear Robert say he wants to do everything right? That's a whole new concept for us. Mrs. Littrell?
Thank you. A great presentation, Robert. That was very thorough. All your paperwork was very thorough, very well done. So, Michael, my first question is about the zoning. This is considered a non-residential development to put in a trail and a platform? Because the, the platform doesn't, doesn't appear to be a structure. And so my interpretation of a development is either a building or a structure, but the platform seems too small to be a structure.
As far as I know, for like requiring a site plan or something like that, the requirement would more be based off of parking and less about the platform itself. I mean, the platform is definitely something we want to check, check on and make sure that it meets all the codes and stuff like that as far as safety requirements. But I think the parking is the bigger issue for site plan.
And Mimi, if I could just speak to that, I think there's a definition of structure in, yes, you know, at the beginning of 174-10. And I don't know, Robbie, if you noticed that as well.
So over three feet, which this isn't.
A man-made combination of materials assembled in a fixed location to give support or shelter or for any other purpose, including buildings, frameworks, platforms, sheds, and the like, provided that signs, utility poles, and small decorative or accessory structures not over three feet in height or six feet in any dimension, such as sculptures, mailboxes, birdbaths, benches, and the like, shall not be subject to the yard requirements of this chapter if located at least five feet from the side or rear lot line. A rear lot line fences that are over six feet in height shall not be considered structures. So, um, that's that definition.
So isn't this like twenty inches tall and six feet long or something? So not over three feet, not larger than six?
It's going to be a six-foot-by-six-foot square, and it's going to be twenty inches roughly off the ground. What I read was that anything over thirty inches required some sort of handrails and engineer approval for the safety concerns of that. So we made sure that it was twenty inches because that's a reasonably safe height, but it would also allow people to get a little bit of height so that they can see over all the marsh grass and stuff and out onto the wetland.
So, um, so my, I'm just, I just question whether this is a non-residential development. So that's where, so it's a non-residential development that adds parking that triggers site plan. But if it's not defined as a non-residential development, then the parking alone wouldn't trigger site plan.
Well, I think residential, and I could be wrong, and we can always get an opinion, and the others can speak to this too. But residential would be if there is a dwelling unit as opposed to a, a commercial space. Yeah, right. So it's kind of this quasi. Maybe the other board members have history.
Okay.
Something similar. But I think definitely, once you get back with the building commissioner, whether that deck would need a building permit or not, you know, so that is
Yeah.
safely, and it can hold the weight of the people that you're anticipating or whatever, like a regular deck on a house would be.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, Mimi. I just wanted to clarify.
So, well, that, so that was my main question. I'll listen to the, the more seasoned board members and see what they have to say on that subject. And then I think I'd like to hear what the abutters have to say before I have any more questions. Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
Robbie, good to see you. I don't think I've seen you since either a Pinewood Derby and/or Little League. So it's been about nine years or something like that. But anyway, Robbie, did you, did you see the petition that, with all the signatures dated November first, 2020, from the abutters?
I have not been sent that, no. I have heard about it in other Conservation Commission.
So, yeah, I think you really want to think through, you know, kind of what you're getting into with the resonance of that street. Because we just did a a site plan on Chestnut Hill Road for a far more expansive project. And it involved, you know, expanding a parking area. And there was a lot of back and forth with that proponent about the, like, the traffic and the parking. And I don't remember the abutters of that project going to the lengths in the detail that the abutters of your submission are going to. So I'm just, I just want to mention, like, I would read through the materials carefully that the abutters have, have sent because there's a lot of signatures on this petition. And you can count on, you know, a high level of scrutiny by these abutters and a lot of pushback based on what I'm seeing and based on my experience on the board. So I certainly admire, you know, the concept. And I would, you know, I would welcome review of the submission very objectively and, you know, be willing to support it if it, if it meets guidelines and codes. But I would, I would highly recommend either some outreach, you know, thorough review of the abutters' concerns and questions, and, you know, consider maybe some outreach to the abutters. And it'll probably be better PR for, for the scouts as well. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Hey, Robert. Haven't seen you in a long time either. Big T-ball. But, um, I want to pick up on what Mr. Stein was saying. The ingenuity, well, first of all, the, the application, your presentation, I think rivals professionals that have come into the Planning Board. And the detail that you have in your, your deck, the pictures, the thoughtfulness you put into this, A-plus. You know, I can't commend you enough. The, the thought to, to put this in for the town, for all Eagle Scout projects that come before us, I'm always amazed at the ingenuity and the thoughtfulness that goes into it. So I, I, I think, you know, what the other Planning Board members have brought up, you know, you, you do have a couple of hurdles that you'd probably still have to get through. The neighbors' objections or concerns. You know, I think you have to work with them on that aspect. But, you know, again, overall, the project, I just want to commend you for what you've done tonight, how you presented yourself, the project, and the work with Karina and everything you've done already. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Robbie, um, this is quite a project. Three hun, what'd you say, three hundred and thirty feet?
Sixty.
Three hundred and sixty feet going through a jungle, down to a wetland that involves a small bridge and a platform. It's an outstanding project, and it's simple, but it opens up this piece of land, as you've said, to great things. That alone, to me, is, is just a great project. Strongly recommend, like the rest of the board, take the parking, take the parking out of the project. If Solf wants parking, let them come to, before the board, let them make a submittal for additional parking on the street. And let Solf deal with the DPW and the neighbors and the police. Your project is absolutely outstanding without, without the parking element. Still accessible. People can walk there. People can ride their bicycles there. It still would be a fabulous project. You would also, I believe, based on what we're hearing, if you take the parking out of it, you don't have to go to site plan. Makes it much, much simpler. You get yourself a building permit, even if, if that's required, or if the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer says that you don't need that, it makes it even more simple. So that's, I think, that's my, certainly my recommendation, and I think it's consistent with what the rest of the board is saying. Take the parking out of it. It's still a fabulous project. I'll open it up to the public. Anybody, Sarah?
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, go, go ahead, Robert.
So the reason that we have the parking in the plan to begin with is because back in August and September, when we were originally bringing this before the Conservation Commission, the abutters had raised a lot of concerns about parking. There had been a few instances of trespassing through their property to get down to the Solf property. There's also a bus turnaround right across the street that people often park in during hunting season to access the other property near there. So there was a lot of concern over people trespassing onto their property and parking where they shouldn't and potentially blocking buses. So that's why the parking has since been added to help alleviate that concern.
Let's see where that takes us. Sarah?
All righty. We have John Reed.
Good evening. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yep. Could you please state your first, last name and your address?
Sure. It's John Reed, and the address is 34 Bigelow Road.
Thank you.
So, so I have two comments, and I'll try to separate them so they're succinct. The first one is with respect to the parking. When I first looked at the, the presentation and noting, sharing some of the same sentiment as Mr. Stein, it is very detailed and provided a good understanding of what, of what you've proposed, Rob, for, for the project. But with respect to the parking, the first thought I had was to understand there's already existing parking, and I don't, excuse me for not knowing the name of that parking lot that parking lot that, uh, where people can park and walk on the trails that abut this community. That is just to the west of the property, and it's a short walk, uh, across the Southborough and Westborough Town Line and uh, so initially, in terms of looking at it in a way to eliminate, uh, or reduce some of the environmental impact, uh, uh, consider using that parking lot and have that be a, a place to park in. It's a short walk up to that, up to that, uh, path to get to that, to the ramp. Uh, so that was the first consideration for the parking. Now, the second comment is more just along the line of what some of the, uh, board members touched on in, in understanding your constituency or your neighbors or, uh, those who are going to be surrounded by, uh, a project that, uh, could potentially be done and, and after, uh, the voice, uh, if your project is, is done, Rob, it's what the community now lives with, uh, potentially in perpetuity. And this is just coming from, uh, a father of two young children, uh, in a, in a family that moved to this area about six or seven years ago. Uh, the entire neighborhood has completely, uh, converted from, or perhaps transformed from one generation to the next. The houses are being sold and the, uh, the, the homes are being bought by, uh, generally speaking, uh, families with young kids. And, and the reason why I bring that up is I try to just look at it from the perspective of, uh, of, uh, the, the overall benefit of the project uh, to the community, particularly those neighbors that are directly abutting it. What concerns me the most, and I think it was, uh, one of the board members, uh, used the word jungle to describe it, is that if you can imagine on Halloween night, e- every year, there seems to be a growing number of young kids in the, in the neighborhood. And so with that comes the ability to be able to play and run around, and it's really makes it a, a, a an ideal neighborhood, uh, in my opinion, to, to raise a family in Southborough. Uh, but with all that being said, what concerns me the most, and this is more focused on the public safety perspective, and knowing that some of those young, uh, men and, uh, women or, or girls and boys who are uh, behind you in their, their scouting career is, is, is looking out for their, their well-being. And what concerns me the most is a, a father, again, of, of two young children is watching, and this is just watching the behavior of my own kids, is we're going to go down and enjoy that platform the first time. And then, uh, the second or third time, are those same kids going to go down and wander uh, to this path that is through the jungle and, 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 uh, well out, uh, I'll say out of range of anyone that can hear them. That is what concerns me the most is that, in, in most of the neighborhood, if you, if, if the kids are playing along the buffer zone or other areas because of the, the way that area has filled with water and so forth, there's uh, there, there's actually not much left in terms of vegetation, so you can, you know, the kids can go pretty much pretty far and wide, and you still have, uh, a pretty good sight, a line of sight on those kids. They go down through that area, and once they, as you showed in that one street view, uh, image, once they go into that path, uh, they are out of sight. Once they get to that platform, are they out of, out of, uh, of, 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 of the reach of sound? And then what concerns me is then, the way that platform is designed, uh, what kids tend to like to do next is, is, uh, play on ice or, uh, move on to that, um, that area that's been flooded by the, by the beaver dams. Then, uh, does that pose another risk that, in the event that somebody falls into that, a, a young child falls into the ice, what is the whole, you know, what is the whole process to try to, uh, you, you know, try, try to, try to rescue a child? That's my number one concern and, uh, you know, I'll close by saying, and it's really just, and I don't have the, the Boy Scout oath in front of me, but my, my, my son having listened to it says something about helping others. I think what that petition is telling you is, the majority of the community around this project uh, don't support it. Maybe we can be convinced otherwise, but I think that the closing message is, I think we're all asking in, in kind of a roundabout way, we're asking for your help to not do the project to, uh, preserve the community we have and to protect those children. Thank you.
Anyone else, Sarah?
I might be able to help alleviate some of his concerns.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Robbie.
Uh, the, as I mentioned earlier, the strip of land is only forty feet wide, and it does abut up to two other houses. So they're definitely not outside of the, uh, reach of sound. And then, uh, at the end of that strip, um, they come to the wetland area, which I tried to get out there once. Um, you, you can't. It's, it's very muddy and, uh, there's standing water. Um, so I don't think they can wander too far out into that area. Um, I do definitely hear your concern about the ice, though. That is something that I haven't thought about yet.
Anyone else, Sarah?
Yes. Okay. Donna?
Hi, uh, my name is Donna Bigelow-Sergi, and my husband, Rob, is here as well. And as you can see, my maiden name is the same as the street name. I didn't go far. Um, I have been very familiar with this property, uh, born, raised, and raised my family here. In nineteen ninety-seven is when my family donated the back land to SOF. And we, our intention was not to, not for it to become a burden to the neighbors, but for people to enjoy it. And as someone from Southborough, born and raised, I salute Rob and how he's represented the Boy Scouts of Southborough. With that being said, we do have a few concerns, which we have let you know. Um, one of them was, you know, mainly about the certified survey. If you were to drive up here and you look at the land, it is not as it appears um, on a site plan. Uh, the site plans that Rob has used, which the Conservation Committee, Commission has, uh, challenged, is a lot of it is the G, I think it's called GIS, um, it's through the internet, so a lot of times they're not that accurate. We've had our land surveyed a few times, um, as well as when we did donate the land in nineteen ninety-seven. There's still a few original markers out there. And as Karina said, our well, we have a concern with our well, we have a concern with the parking. Uh, for a three-hundred-foot trail, we don't feel that it needs three and a half or four, or even one parking space. We have tried to walk the land with Rob, and we've offered up our names, addresses, and we just haven't been connected with to do that, but we would gladly walk and show him some of the boundaries that we feel are being challenged. So we would really like to strongly request a certified site plan of this project before we go forward. That would be first and foremost. And then after that, we would like to eliminate the parking at, uh, I believe it was in November, December, November, at the Conservation Committee. Robbie or SOF was challenged by, uh, the commission, and they said it, what Rob has proposed, all that hard work, is four or five scouts work a project. They said that they, you know, why so big for such a small trail? And he really, it, I mean, it is a big undertaking. And at that meeting, uh, there was a representative from SOF who was willing, if the board approved it that night, to forego the parking spaces. And now, I, it appears the parking spaces are back on. They were, they were in the original plans. And we really have concerns about this, the safety of the street. Uh, Karen Gallagher from Highway Department came up and replaced a sign that was there years ago that says "Emergency vehicle and bus turnaround only." We have video of the school buses, uh, going through my neighbor's driveway, which is a circle driveway, because they couldn't get into that parking space. Well, since Karen Gallagher, which I believe it was in the beginning of December, placed a sign, replaced the sign up there, we haven't had any problems with people parking in the turnaround, per se. But the trail that Mr. Reed was talking about, it is the Swink, um, it's part of Sudbury Valley Trust. It's in Westborough. Bigelow Road is a dirt road, and during the winter, it is not cloud-maintained ever. And there's no reason why, the Boy Scouts of Westborough created this along with the town of Westborough. There is a big parking space there, and I would say it's probably a quarter of a mile from where this trail is. And I believe there would be plenty of parking there that we do not need to create any parking spaces, um, which opens up more things with parking spaces. You know, are our property values going to go down because we have a parking lot next to our house? Off-hours parking, we have had some issues before they put the sign up with people parking and just partying, and we have to pick up their trash and things like that. I know Rob said at one of his meetings that they could put some signage up, but they couldn't control it. And that also goes along with Mr. Reed's, um, recommendations, uh, regarding safety down at the, the platform. If they're within an airshot of my, our home or the Crams home, are we now on patrol to watch for these young neighborhood kids? Uh, to make sure everyone's safe. I mean, we just, we, we support his project, but we just don't think it fits here right now with the parking spaces.
And, and I would add, hi, it's, uh, Rob Serge, I would add, the most important piece for us as abutters is the certified, uh, survey done. Because, um, when, when Robbie did the original, um, we had some question, I had some question of where of the original stakes were, and come to find out, yeah, they, they were wrong in the last meeting. Um, I think, Robbie, you mentioned that, that we had to make some changes because it was off, because it was actually on our land. That's the point. When you come to, to, to any abutters, any type of project like this, we're going to be certain what the, um, what the lot lines are, especially when we have the public pe- public folks, pu- public way, where people can, something can happen, I don't know who's liable for what. So that's the most important piece for us. And in the parking, um, we would rather not have parking. It's really should be a walking trail, and that was the whole idea when Harvey Bigelow gave the land, uh, Donna's, uh, father and, and, uh, Betty Bigelow, who's, who, who is, uh, still, still, uh, still alive and, and lives in, on the street as well. So the whole idea was just more for a, 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 a trail to come in, no parking, really no structures, actually. He didn't want any structures out there either. So, um, you know, we, we support what Robbie did. I mean, it's, it's a great project, and I, and, and, you know, I, I keep on saying that. But as abutters, I, I, I just think we, we have some issues with, with that. We got to make sure that the lot lines are correct. Um, and that we'd rather not have any parking, because we don't want any, any, um, off-hours um, shenanigans that can happen down here, and we know it, I've seen it. And then the concerns with just overall traffic, and I think Mr. Reed mentioned it. Uh, since the pandemic hit, with all folks at home, a lot of families up and down this street, and I'm here, um, in my office, so I, I see it every day. So that's another concerning. Um, it's just a net number of people that are in and out, uh, here as well. And then, when you look at the, at the soft land, it actually goes around my house, around our houses, as well as my neighbors. And we want to make sure that, you know, that if this project does go through, that, that we have assurance that, that doesn't get extended behind my house. Because that, now you get in privacy situations where people will be less than sixty, uh, sixty, seventy-five feet from my house. So, um, that's a concern as well. I think it's a concern of some of the neighbors as well, this has expanded. So those is, there's a lot of things that we want to talk about that, that we need, we need answers for before anything gets approved, and we feel that way. But most importantly is getting a, uh, certified survey done by a certified engineer. So that's kind of, uh, our thoughts.
Robbie, Robbie. Restate, restate what you said about the survey.
Uh, so we do plan on getting the survey after the last November meeting. The main reason we're here is to find out any additional requirements that would be required by any of you um, on top of what we already have required from the Conservation Commission. So we do plan on doing that. There's two other things I would like to point out. Uh, first of all, in the August twentieth meeting, um, it was mentioned, I forget if it was you or Mrs. Cram, uh, but one of you mentioned, uh, that you wanted parking to alleviate parking in the bus turnaround and on the road. Also, um, I know in the last, uh, meeting, it was mentioned that we were okay with, um, getting rid of the parking requirement uh, with the Conservation Commission. The reason that's still on here is because we're presenting that, because that would be a, uh, topic that this group would be able to address if we do have to do the parking. The second thing that I would like to address is the fact that I have, uh, both posted my contact information and, um, Melissa has posted the contact information. Um, and in one of the November meetings, I forget exactly which November meeting, um, it was mentioned that if you guys had any further, um, requests to meet up and talk to us, that I was okay with doing that, and you had access to my contact information there, so.
Hi, Emma, it, this is Donna Sergi again. Um, I, when we spoke in August, we had spoke about the traffic and the parking in regards to the traffic that the pandemic has brought to our street for people to walk. And they were parking all along in front of our homes, and I have a flat front yard. Uh, they were driving on our sprinklers just heads and breaking them. So that was our concern, was bringing more traffic to the neighborhood. Um, and as far as meeting up, Robbie, we have, uh, told you we wanted to, and I, you know, I'm not, we'll just let it be here. And you said you go to school and you have a lot to do, and we said we could meet anytime, so we kind of left it in your court. And we're still available at any point in time to, to go over and walk the land with you. Thank you.
Alright, I'll get in touch with you definitely then. Um, and also yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, put my contact info in the chat again uh, during this meeting, just so you guys have it. Um, and if you want to send me yours through, I don't know how you want to go about that, um, that would be fine too.
Anyone else, Sarah?
Yes. Could you please state your first and last name and your address?
Hi, yes, Sherri Wittes, uh, thirty-two Bigelow Road, SOF. Um, hi, I just wanted to thank everybody for having this discussion tonight. Um, and Robbie, I want to say again, I'm a big fan of the Boy Scouts, and I think you have done a wonderful job articulating yourself in all these meetings and and, and, and going through this process, which I think we all thought was going to be easier. Um, I, I don't really want to beat a dead horse and go over everything everybody said. Um, I just, I really feel that, uh, SOF has, um, kind of been using Robbie in a sense where he's brought on this project that's really bigger than a Boy Scout project should have been. And there is a right and a wrong way to do something, and I'm not opposed to project at all, as long as it is done in the proper way, as long as there is survey for it. If the traffic gets looked at, um, if the parking spots that are being proposed are not in the right of way of the road, which is where they look to be now. They're not putting in the setbacks that the, the right of way of a thirty-foot road is, um, which Bigelow was. Um, the other issue I have is that this property is a wetland that isn't exactly healthy at the moment. It has a beaver issue. We're starting to see more dead trees, and there's a lot of invasive species on that strip where, where SOF is proposing this trail. And I, I have a lot of concerns with the beavers, and I would love SOF to help maintain them on their own property, because I've seen since the last two years since we brought the property, at least a foot change in elevation of the water, and now I have standing water. I've got people canoeing in my backyard. at least a foot change in elevation of the water, and now I have standing water. I've got people canoeing in my backyard, which originally they used to mow it like a meadow, it was a field. So there, there is an issue with the drainage. And if this is going to be a wonderful idea where possibly people can walk all the way around this, this beautiful piece of wetland, which it really is, the drainage needs to be taken care of, and this could be a wonderful access point to that. The other thing is that strip has a lot of invasive species. The Bittersweet has run so rampant, it's, it's thicker than my leg, and it is snuffing out all these beautiful deciduous trees that now have dead hanging branches. And I mean, it's, it's a project that really needs somebody, you know, with, with like an arborist or a professional to go in there and, and really maintain it and get it to a point where then the Boy Scouts could maintain it yearly and make it what it could be intended for everyone to come and use. There's a lot of trails on the other side of the road, and having this little access point for people to go out to a platform is not a bad idea. It's just, there is a right way and a wrong way to do it, and the buses have a lot of trouble turning around here. I've got three little kids, they get on two different buses, and there are several times it'll go down the street, it'll be fifteen minutes before I can figure out how to come back because someone's parked in the wrong area. I don't think what's down there is actually a turnaround. I thought it was state parking for the trails. I could be completely wrong, but it's not designated with no parking spots. It doesn't fit the, the parameters of a turnaround, because the road was basically discontinued. I don't even think it was abandoned, yeah. So it doesn't go straight through to Westboro. If it went straight through Westboro, it would be a completely different story, but if there are going to be parking down there, which is great to have it off the road where Robbie's suggesting it, there, there needs to be something addressed at some point about the turnaround for, for all traffic down here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess.
Just want to clarify real quick that the area across from forty-four Bigelow Road is in fact a turnaround for buses and emergency vehicles. And just the situation with the Farwink Farm parking area that's been brought up more than once. It's probably a little bit under an eighth of a mile or so down a dirt road that you can drive down, if it's in good condition, and you can definitely walk down it. So it is within range and could be used as parking for this project.
Hello, this is Elizabeth Bigelow Court, right? I live at thirty-eight Bigelow Road. Like my sister said, we were born and raised on this road, and we were fortunate enough to raise our own families here. As we know, as you know, the Barrow Loop Trails are located on this road, which has bought a, which has brought a tremendous amount of traffic to this once quiet road. This past fall, I went out for a short run and counted twenty-two cars parked at the turnaround at the end of the dirt road because the parking lot down there was full. This made for a super dangerous situation because the road, the dirt road leading to that is narrow. We've got a bunch of school age kids, school age kids who ride their bikes up and down the road. This road is also considered a dead-end road, as people have spoken about, because the town doesn't maintain it past forty-six Bigelow Road. In fact, in the winter, they will plow it, so if you come in the other way from Westboro, you've got to back up because there's no way to turn around. I appreciate what Robert's trying to do, however, however, not on this road. We don't need another reason for non-Bigelow Road residents to be driving up and down the road. We were notified about this project in early August, and I feel like with each ma- meeting, the plans and the specs keep changing on it, which is definitely a concern of mine. And as a taxpayer and in a Butter of the wetlands, I strongly oppose this project.
Anyone else?
Um, yes, one more.
Hi, this is Matt Geary, forty-six Bigelow Road. So as people have kind of already said and beat it to death, the the traffic for me is one of the biggest issues. I live at the very end of the road before it goes to a dirt road, and they plow about ten feet past the end of my driveway. So in the winter, when people get aggressive and decide they're going to come the other way, it's my doorbell they ring in the winter to help them shovel out. I, I think the biggest thing for me is the people aren't all going to walk here. Right? That's a beautiful sentiment, and it's a great thought, and I guarantee you it won't happen. So if you don't include the parking, but you're driving the traffic here, what are people going to do? We just spent the whole month of December with hunting season, with pickup trucks parked up and down the side of the road because people were hunting on the MWRA land across, across the street from us. Like, everybody said, you know, tremendous amount of respect, you've done an amazing job. I can't imagine myself being at your age going through all of this and presenting it. But I, I think you saw it in the letter, or you, you'll see it in the letter, is it's a good idea, it's just the wrong place for it. That, that's all I wanted to add.
We've spent a lot of time on this, a lot more than I thought we would. Is there anyone else?
I do have two, two more.
Hi, this is Cynthia Cram at forty-four Bigelow Road, and in the interest of time, I'll keep it short. I don't really have anything to add. I sent an email this afternoon, and basically I share everyone else's concerns. Just wanted to make that clear and you know, just reiterate what everyone else has already said. And I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just one more.
Hi there, I'm new at doing Zoom, so I apologize if I'm doing something wrong. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. I live at twenty-two Bigelow Road, and like the Biglos grew up here in this neighborhood, my parents used to live on the corner of fourteen Ward Road and Bigelow Road. And, and I built out, out back, so my driveways aren't to Bigelow Road. I admire the project, I think it's, you know, I think it's a big undertaking. My big concerns are traffic, which, because of COVID, we've got a big increase, we've got an increase of the walking. People turning around in everybody's driveways. We have, we've had to have the town come in a number of times to repair our driveway for different reasons along the front, but this year we had to put stakes up and leave them up all summer because the town had to come back in because so many people were parking along the front. We're not even at the end of the road, so if we're getting halfway up the second hill, you know, people parking here to use the trails at the end of the road, it is kind of concerning. Why doesn't somebody take on a project of dealing with the beavers? I mean, people along Bigelow Road beyond me that back up to the wetland there, they're losing land. Is the town giving them a rebate? See, I'm going to take this in a little bit different direction. That beaver, the beaver dams need to be solved. You put in a trail and a dock and everything else down there for people to view from, I just see that just being taken underwater as time goes on. Who will maintain that? Who will keep raising the, the viewing area up? I'm not, I haven't seen the plan, so I'm not exactly sure, but I'm just tossing some ideas out there. But I guess my biggest concerns are the parking, turning around. The town of Southboro only plows to the end of Bigelow Road, which is tarred up to the Westboro line. And that's where they bank the snow. So during the off-season, you know, during the winter, people can't get through there unless they're hiking. And that means they've already parked in Westboro and walked our direction, or parked along Bigelow Road, which during the snow time, the, the roads here, they don't plow it as wide as the town used to plow it. We've got a contract plower now. That may or may not make a difference, I don't know. But I'm just, again, tossing out different things that I see. This winter's mild, it's not so bad. But I also have concern, like John Reed was saying, about kids. What if kids are down there drinking, partying? Little kids get down there and somebody gets hurt. It shouldn't be up to the Crams or the Biglos to have to hear for somebody, or the Sergis, for somebody to hear somebody's cries for help. So I think that that's just inviting kids to go down there. Possibly, right now, I don't think they actually do. I think that if their land backs up to the, to the wetland out there, which has gotten very high, and we've got all these trees that are falling down. I think that they've been taught by their parents to stay out, but what about other kids? But anyways, you know, I think that, you know, your project in general, what a fabulous undertaking, but I think that there's a lot of things that need to be looked at. I agree with the other neighbors on the street. It may or may not be a big issue, I don't know if it's planned outright, but our road really isn't that wide to afford for the extra parking. But anyways, that's just my two cents on it. I just want to toss out some ideas, and why not look at getting rid of the beaver dams first before undertaking this other little proj- big project on that trail? Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to let Robbie finish this up. I see we've spent really a lot of time on this. Go ahead, Robbie.
So I think just the three final things. First of all, talking about your beaver concern as an Eagle Scout project, messing with local animals really isn't something that I can do. So I understand your concern with the beavers and the rising water levels. There's really nothing I can do about that. And from what I know as well, the beavers aren't actually their dams and such aren't actually on Solf property, they're on the Westboro side. So they really can't do anything about that either. And the platform with the embankment, we measured it out, it's about fifty inches above water level as it stands right now. And the water level has already raised a lot, so unless these beavers are master engineers, I don't think it's going to rise to the point where it'll ever put the platform underwater. Second, I also, I hear everybody's concern about traffic and, you know, people parking where they shouldn't and stuff. Again, I don't really, I don't see a way that I can really control this issue. If anybody has any ideas, I'm open. As far as the Solf property goes, I can only guarantee putting up signage. And like we mentioned earlier with the parking, maybe parking will you know, influence people parking in the wrong spot. That's why it was originally suggested we put it in the plan. But I'm also happy to leave it out. So it's really up to the Butters and the board. And third and finally, I hear a lot of safety concerns, and I'd just like to point out the fact that this project really isn't anything more dangerous than any of the other trail systems in the area. And like, what we're doing here isn't revolutionarily dangerous, I guess. I don't know a better way to put that, but you know, it is open, soft land. And I understand that there's going to be a lot of kids in the neighborhood and such, but really, it isn't on the trail builder to you know, dictate what future generations of kids will do on the property. The best I can do is make sure that the trail and the platform is as safe as possible.
Thank you. Um, I just want to make sure that we all understand that the planning board agreed to place this item on our agenda and accomplish, I think, what we did tonight, which is to have Robbie present the project so people can see what it's all about, or have knowledge of where they can access it in more detail. And then allow the planning board's meeting to be used as a place where people can the neighbors and the board can, can talk about the project, and we certainly have done that tonight. But there's no plan. There's been no application, no plan that's been submitted for planning board action at this time. So again, this is just a discussion item, and there's no action required, requested from the planning board beyond what we did tonight. And we'll see where, see where this project goes. I'm going to open it back up just to the planning board members if they have anything to say. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I hear the, the concerns of the neighborhood and everything, and you know, I, I agree kind of with what Robbie said, there, there are a lot of trails around, one of which I know goes by a pond that has a hockey net in it that kids put out and skate on every winter, as far as I know, and that is, I think, even deeper in the woods with no one around to help if something goes wrong. So I, I think you know, I, I think you know, there's a responsibility for people to do what's right when on other properties too, so I think, you know, and I don't think it's a Bigelow's responsibility to, to be a watchdog over that for anyone who goes down that trail. The other piece too, if, if there are, you know, people drinking or doing things like that, I would say you call the police department, have them go down there and you know, straighten out what's, what's happening. If something's going on that shouldn't be going on down there, so you know, that, that, that's all. I mean, I think that's what we see in, in lots of different places. I used to live right next to the Fayetteville Park. I had to call the police department many times for people parking in front of my house doing things they shouldn't do. So unfortunately, I think in a, in an area that we are with the current pandemic and everything, unfortunately, people are looking for ways to get out, and, or fortunately, people are looking for ways to get out about, and it, it has changed things a little bit, but there are rules that people have to follow, and there are ways to take care of that. That's all.
Anyone else on the planning board? Mrs. Luttrell?
I just want to thank you again, Robbie. It's a great project, and it seems from listening to the Butters, if the parking was eliminated, some, some of the fears would be alleviated, so perhaps the trail goes in without the parking, so it doesn't attract people, so to speak, to the trail and see how it goes, and then maybe at some other time, you know, Solf can take that on if, if they want to. But I, I think it's a, a nice project, and I think it's a good idea that you're having the lot surveyed, so you know for sure where the, the lot lines are, so there's Solf isn't abutting on anyone's property or vice versa. But I, you know, Solf does have the, the right, it's their property, there was nothing in the deed that said you know, that that property could never be utilized, so I think that they, it's within their rights to put a a trail in there, and I think you've done a, a great job. Thank you.
And I'd be happy to eliminate the parking too. I mean, it makes my life easier as well, so if the Butters are all right with it now, I will take out the parking.
I want to encourage you to keep in touch with the town planner, and, and I'd like to move on to our next agenda item and wish you the best of luck.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Robbie.
Next item on the agenda is another discussion item. EDC, Downtown Initiative Bylaw Status. Would that be Sarah?
That would be me. So the Board of Selectmen discussed the status of this particular bylaw at their last meeting on the fifth. They do, and it was put on the drop box and distributed to the board. They do have two kind of current working versions at this point. One of them has comments from Uh, they do have two kind of current working versions, um, at this point. One of them has comments from Judy Barrett, um, the consultant who is, you know, writing the current draft. The other has, um, comments from Adam Acosta, uh, who was another consultant on the project earlier on, um, who has more of a legal perspective on on how it's written. So, um, at the time of discussion, they were talking about merging, um, those two documents into to one, um, and then voting on it at their next meeting on the nineteenth, uh, in order to get it ready, uh, for, uh, the public hearing process. Um, so, you know, not much has changed. Um, you know, again, they're just kind of incorporating the feedback from both consultants as well as the feedback um, from just before Thanksgiving, the meeting on the, uh, November twenty-fourth.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody? Questions, comments? Okay, next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, the planners' report. Rena.
All right, uh, briefly, last week, at the last meeting, um, there was a question about, um, the, uh, actually during the interim, there was a question on the, um, two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting warrant. I corresponded with Matt Purple Town Administrator. He indicates that right now, all the warrant articles that were um, proposed for the last town meeting that were pushed forward are on the warrant. Um, the warrant closed, they're on the warrant. Um, there could possibly be, um, a set schedule shift for the March twentieth, anticipated date to the town meeting, depending on how the pandemic, um, the status of it at the time. So we anticipate if every, you know, we're counting on March twentieth to start, we'll we plan on having the public hearings for the bylaw changes on February eighth to be open, uh, to open the public hearings. That's that one. Any questions on that one? Okay.
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah.
Are they talking about limiting, like, just to, like, uh, finance things to keep the town running again for the town meeting or?
No, no, it's going to be the full warrant at this point, but things can change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, for the meeting on the twenty-fifth of January, the next meeting, um, just wanna give you a heads up that Fay School will be on the agenda for a discussion item for, um, addition to the second story. Uh, in addition, as a second story, uh, about just under four thousand square foot. They're going to present what they have there. It's supposedly not a change in, um, requiring additional parking and such. Uh, but they wanted to present it to the town to, uh, to the planning board to make sure they're on board with that. Um, they do have the Dover Amendment, but, um, they were asking if they do have to come to site plan or not. So they'll be discussing that.
Is that a second story on a school building or on a?
Yeah, it's on, um, it's called the, um, it's the large rectangular where they, on Middle Road where they drop the kids off in that horseshoe. There's a larger building back there. There's a small portion that sticks out um, on a first floor and it has a patio on that roof. They're going to eliminate a meeting room and put a class, uh, uh, like an open classroom for like computer, uh, learning and uh, CAD and digitizing type stuff. Um, so it's kind of like a swap, but they're gonna give the details, um, in a couple of weeks at the next meeting so that you can have all the info. Uh, let's see. Um, I hope all of you submitted your conflict of interest certifications and acknowledgement forms. Okay. Um, the Mast D O T Accelerator eight bridges are continuing their work. You can see that uh, on their website. If you have a question, those are on, uh, Porterville Road, Woodland Road, Parkerville. You can always call me at the office if you have any questions on that. And that's all I have.
Extended one, the, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes. Mr. Mills.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
That's the twenty-fourth joint meeting with the selectmen, right?
That's correct.
I was absent, so I'm gonna, um, recuse on that vote.
Well, I was absent at that one too.
If you read them, you can still vote on them. It's up to you guys.
We need a second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion.
I have one quick thing. Um, line two sixty-five, after ten percent, add minimum if the, and then after goal is.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell.
Lehan, yes.
Okay, motion's been passed. Uh, next item is the, uh, December fourth, December fourteen, uh, meeting minutes. Mr. Mills.
Make a motion to approve the December fourteen, uh, meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Lehan, yes.
Very professionally done, I might add, the both sets of minutes. Uh, excellent job there, Kate.
As always.
Thank you, Kate.
You're also nice to me.
Oh, you're you're nice to us with the top quality, uh, minutes.
Thank you.
Next meeting is January twenty-fifth. Um, and anybody have anything else?
Happy New Year.
Sarah, do you have anything to tell us?
I I got engaged.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Thanks, I'm very happy.
Doesn't mean you get to go anywhere though. You still.
No, no, no.
Can you hold up your left, uh, hand, please?
Pretty, pretty.
Thank you.
Really pretty.
Thanks. It's a Morganite.
Beautiful. It's nice.
And Andrew, you missed it. It's technically December forty-second, twenty twenty. We haven't yet turned it to twenty-one.
Mr. Mills.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Lehan, yes?
Okay, we're adjourned.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, thank you.
Bye, congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you so much.
Bye, Sarah. Good job.
Bye, thank you so much. Take care.